Welcome, MBRA, the Manhattan Beach Residents Association. Welcome to you and glad you all came out tonight. A surprising number of people care about Manhattan Beach. And thank you, candidates, for coming. Seven candidates also indicates an interest in taking care of our city. This is the sixth or so time that Manhattan Beach Residents Association has hosted a candidate's night. My name is Michelle Murphy. I'm going to be asking questions tonight. And my partner in crime is Neil Boyer. He'll be running the buzzer when people go overtime, which they will, and generally assisting. Tonight's festivities will not be livestreamed and won't be on the public interest broadcast station, but they will be on the city's website in a few days, a day or two, when they get it ready. So if you go to that election section on the city website, they will post the film of this, the video of this, and also MBRA will post it on our website. Okay. Tonight's candidates will have one minute to introduce themselves and then one minute to answer questions on a variety of issues. There'll be a few yes/no questions and two minutes at the end to sum up or, you know, give their spiel. Hopefully tonight we will all learn more about each candidate so that on March 5th, voters will be better able to choose wisely. Now let's begin. Ms. Stern?
Hi, welcome, everyone. Welcome to tonight's forum. Thank you to the Manhattan Beach Residents Association for having us here. And thank you all for your interest in our local city government. I'm thrilled to see that you all have an interest in how our city moves forward. So my name is Hildy Stern. I'm a 24-year resident of Manhattan Beach. My husband and I, Jeremy, have raised our four sons here through our school district. And now I am ready to step in and be your next Manhattan Beach City Council member. So I have been an active volunteer in Manhattan Beach for all the years that we've lived here. I've been an active volunteer at all the levels of our schools. I also serve on community-wide boards. I am presently on the Manhattan Beach Hometown Fair Board. I've worked with Project Needs and Richstone Family Center. And I also bring skills to Manhattan Beach City Council. I have two law degrees and a business degree. I was a trial attorney with the U.S. Department of Justice. And I will bring all of these skills to represent and move our city forward. So thank you for being here today.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Mark Burton. I'm a former mayor and council member, running for my second term. I have 35 years of public service experience to a city and its residents. During my first term, I was proud to earn the reputation, the council member that fought for the residents, the community groups, and the small businesses. That's what I did and that's what I'll do. And I'll do it with fidelity. You can trust me. I will make all my decisions in the best interest of the residents only, independent of any special interest group or party, and strictly nonpartisan. Manhattan Beach needs now more than ever a council that will listen to its residents and fight for the residents. I'm the one that instituted the ban on short-term rentals. I'm the one that brought the resolution opposing a desal plant. So I work for you. I always understand that. And I love public service. Public service is my passion. It's been my life's work. Please vote to bring Burton back. Thank you.
Franklin?
Good evening. My name is Joe Franklin. I'm a 34-year resident here in Manhattan Beach. I actually came here as a single man 34 years ago. I drove down Manhattan Beach Boulevard, saw the beach, couldn't believe it. I moved here a week later and I haven't left. I met and married my wife Nancy, and we raised two children here. I became very actively involved in the schools. I focused on safety for the children, also focused on taking care of them not only through the schools, and I supported all the school bond measures, but also with the city. I became involved with a traffic safety program called Do Stop, Don't Speed. I co-created that with Joyce Fahey. You're not going to have an easy decision with the seven of us up here. I think the one thing that you should look at is look at the city council members and mayors that have done this job. I have nine of them that endorse me. Russ Lesser, Bob Holmes, Tim Lilligren, Nick Tell, and five others.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Mr. Withers?
All right, I'm on. Hey, everybody, how you doing? I can tell by how full the room is that you guys all feel that this election is as important as I feel it is. I am a 37-year resident of Manhattan Beach. I am also 37 years old. I have been working as a dentist, I'm sorry, for the past 10 years in Manhattan Beach as a small business owner. And as I've been back from dental school, I've seen some things happening in this town that I don't necessarily like. And I'd like to see us get back to the Manhattan Beach that I knew when I was growing up here. I attended Pacific School. I attended Manhattan Beach Schools all the way through Miracosta. So did my dad. So did my dad's dad before him. I'm a fourth-generation Manhattan Beach citizen, and I look forward to carrying on my family's tradition of serving our community. Thank you.
Mr. Ngoko?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joseph Ngoko. And I live in El Porto, and I'm running for Manhattan Beach City Council because it's time for our city to get fit, fair, inclusive, and transparent. Our little city is facing some very big issues in the near future, things like short-term rental, undergrounding of utilities, and even a master fiber plan. These are the types of issues that can easily pit neighbor against neighbor and destroy the fabric of our community. That's why now more than ever it's important that we choose elected officials who are fair and open-minded, who include all the residents in their discussions of the issues that affect all of us, and can be utterly transparent as they make those decisions. Since everyone's talking about how long they've been here, I'm the new kid. Some of you may recall that I ran two years ago. So at this point, I've been here for five years. We'll leave it at that.
Mr. Powell?
First of all, I want to thank the Manhattan Beach Residents Association for having this. I'm Wayne Powell. I served two terms on the Manhattan Beach City Council, and during those two terms, I was mayor for two terms as well. Prior to that, I served for nine years as an unpaid volunteer city commissioner. And before that, for 20 years, I've been a longtime community volunteer, and I know most of you from all of the organizations and events that I've volunteered on. I'm a 23-year resident, a Manhattan Beach native, I mean, South Bay native. I love Manhattan Beach. And on the city council, I always worked hard to be responsive to residents, to protect the quality of life, public safety, government transparency, and most importantly, fiscal responsibility. I'm very proud that in the eight years I was on the city council, we eliminated waste, we had caps on employee salaries, we did a lot to earn a AAA bond rating, perfect rating, only one of two cities. Thank you.
Ms. Hadley?
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Hadley. I'm glad to stand. I'm a little on the shorter end, and it's nice to see the people in the back. I'm running for city council on March 5. I would love your vote. My spiel is vote new, vote change, vote Hadley. There are seven of us candidates. We all care, and all our hearts are in the right place. Five of us are new. I'm definitely new. I don't want to take us back to other councils and 10 years ago, or even two or four years ago. Let's move Manhattan Beach forward. I'd like to be part of that. I don't like this revolving door of professional politicians that we have in Manhattan Beach. So I would urge you to consider voting for one of us five newbies, and I'm one of them. So what sets me apart is I'm a 23-year resident of Manhattan Beach. I'm also a mother of four. I have one boy and three girls. My youngest is 17. She's a senior at Miracosta. And my oldest is 23, and he's a second lieutenant in the U.S. Army. My four platforms are spending, public safety, schools, and small business. I'm the only MBA. I'm endorsed by 100% of the school board, 11 mayors, and city council members, and I'd love your vote on March 5. Thank you.
Thank you all. Starting with you, Mr. Burton, please answer this question in one minute. Public participation at City Hall has been challenging. Do you agree that this is an issue? And what specific ideas do you have for making cities' issues more visible to the community and encouraging more engagement with the public?
Yes. What? I can sit and stand. Okay. As mayor, our government was more open than it ever had been. We instituted so many changes. Ow! I think I'm in a time warp here. We estimated so many changes regarding open government. And that's what I did in my previous career. I'm a former senior assistant city attorney for LA. So I'm the one they sent into the commissions and councils that weren't following the open meeting laws. So for instance, we now have our agendas come out on Wednesday night. That's something I instituted. We also have a forecast agenda so you can see what's coming up on the agenda. I'm open and honest. That's the person I always have been my entire public service career. And when I get back on council, I'll make sure we're open and honest. I'm the one you need on council because I keep everyone honest. That simple.
Yes, Mr. Franklin? Same question.
Well, we do have a lot of notifications of the city's agenda. It is readily available. I'd like to see a little bit more noticing of residents, like through the mail, of subjects that may pertain to maybe a wider net, cast the net a little bit wider for residents that might have an interest, not just like might just border up to some issues that are happening. I think we should be advertising more in the paper and make it more noticeable within the paper about the different issues that are coming up. It seems like we do a pretty good job. I'd like to, I don't like the idea of changing the parameters for the public access, for the public speaking. Sometimes it's two minutes, sometimes it's three, sometimes it's one. I realize that a lot of people need to be heard, but I think that's really, really important. If someone's taken the time to come down to council chambers, they should be heard. So let's keep up the good work. Let's just notice more people within the surrounding areas and make it more accessible for people, our residents. Thank you.
Mr. Withers?
I'd like to echo what Joe said. If someone takes the time to come down to the council chambers, they absolutely need to be heard. I know that council meetings happen late at night. Sometimes these topics can drill on late into the night. I know my dad probably won't hang around much past 9 o'clock, and I know a lot of citizens are probably on that same sort of schedule. So I'd like to see the important topics moved up to the top of the meeting so that everyone who has something to do the next day, or maybe an early bedtime, gets a chance to say their piece. But if you want to make things more accessible, vote for me. I've had voters coming up and knocking on my front door. If you ask any of my patients, they all have my cellphone number. I'm the most accessible candidate that you could possibly imagine. Vote for me if you want to have more access to your candidates.
Mr. Ngoko?
As a strategic communications consultant, I've spent the better part of the past 20 years reaching out to communities and engaging them. So in the past five years, I've been very active at City Hall in terms of, I'm sorry? In terms of representing, you know, in terms of speaking at council meetings. Today, technology is the foundation of communication, and I absolutely support utilizing our technology department at City Hall even better to engage more of the community. It disproportionately affects two parts of the community, the new and younger members of our community, as well as the seniors and the older generation. You know, the people who used to, 20, 30 years ago, come to City Hall and speak their mind, are now engaging through open City Hall and other technological advances that we've made to stay involved in the decisions that affect all of us.
Mr. Powell?
When I was a newly-elected council member, you had to wait until the end of the meeting to talk on things that were not on the agenda. I felt that was wrong. I shamed my colleagues into moving general audience participation to the beginning of the meeting so you didn't have to wait until the end. There was also a 30-minute total time limit on public speaking, and a number of people never got the opportunity to speak. I thought that was wrong. My initiative rectified that and removed the total time limit. When I was the mayor, I had, and I implemented, the mayor's town hall meetings. I did my mayor's walk and talks. I even shamed the then-city manager into not just doing the bare minimum noticing requirements, but post the agendas well in advance of the meetings. I always stood for open and inclusive government. If you want to know what I would do, look at what I've done. Thank you.
Ms. Hadley?
Thank you. I love the civic involvement in Manhattan Beach. I love how many residents I see at the council meetings well into the night. I see the long lines of people for public comments. So I actually do think we do a pretty good job. I like that the agendas do come out earlier. That's been a benefit to me. I think the meetings are too long. I do think there's too much chit-chat. I even think there are a couple, maybe too many, breaks in there, although for the super-long meetings, you need to have some breaks. I'd like to move them forward a little bit more. And then I also would like to get council, and to be honest, I don't know the history on this, but when I'm on council, I'd like to get council out of the chambers and more into the community. I'd like to have some town halls and some other places. I think it's good for council to maybe be a little less comfortable. They're not behind the dais. They might be standing up. It might be Miracosta. I think we need some open-mic kind of town halls for really controversial things like short-term rentals. So that's what I plan when I'm on city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stern?
Well, thank you. I love this question because it really speaks to me. It's so important to me to be a responsive and accessible city council member. I spend so much time listening and wanting to get information about how our residents feel about any topic that's important to them. And I want to bring that to any of the partners that we are helping to bring issues forward. So we are your conduit for information, and we will bring that to the next level, to helping to understand how we can take what we hear from you and how we can then be responsive to that. We need to be more responsive. I hear over and over that comments, or suggestions, or information, that there isn't a response, and that people don't know what the response is. I want to help breathe that bridge between the community, between our residents, and what's important in moving the city forward. Thank you.
Thank you all. Now we're going to switch to a lightning round of just three questions with only yes or no answers. And we'll just go straight across and then straight across again because your order doesn't matter that much with yes or no. So just answer yes or no. The first question is, do you support a definite and permanent continuation of the current ban on short-term rentals?
Yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Franklin?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Not a permanent ban.
Thank you. Okay, second question. Do you support the proposed new 45-foot building height increase on Sepulveda to attract new hotels to our town?
Yes.
No.
No.
No!
Yes.
No.
Yes.
And finally, most of you are emphasizing your fiscal responsibility. Do you think Manhattan Beach is in fiscal trouble?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Not yet.
Go ahead.
Yes.
No.
No.
Thank you very much. You'll get a chance at the two minutes at the end, if not bored, to elaborate, because I know it's very hard for politicians to answer yes or no to anything. So I appreciate you. Let's start with Mr. Franklin. If your policy about short-term rentals, I have a chance to write it down, so I have to remind us, prevails, and now you can explain your policy a little more if you'd like, how would you enforce the rule? Please be very specific about what regulations you support and why they will work here. Also, maybe, it's only one minute, a little chance to explain your evolution to come to the place where you are so it's no, the ban should continue.
One minute, okay. So I fully support the ban on short-term rentals. It's a quality-of-life issue. I wouldn't want to live next to a party house like that, and I don't think any of our residents should. If you want to be commercially, in a commercial enterprise of renting rooms and everything, you need to buy a hotel, and it needs to be in a commercial zone. You can't do it next to your neighbors. I think the biggest mistake that was made with the last ban, with the last council on short-term rentals, is they didn't provide for enough code enforcement. It's making the residents turn people in. The onus of code enforcement should be on the city and not on its residents. No one wants to be the bad guy. So what I would do is, instead of hiring executive staff at $200,000 per and hiring very expensive consultants, I would go ahead and hire two code enforcement officers. They would be directly reporting to the city manager, not to the department heads. That will get you more clarity of purpose and more clarity of reporting. And how I came about this is just exactly listening to the residents. Very heartfelt the problems that this has caused.
Mr. Withers?
I put a lot of thought into which side of the short-term rental ban I was going to end up on. Having my parents live next door to something that would have been allowed or was allowed in the vote that we had on January 15th, having experienced short-term rentals myself, knowing that I really didn't bring anything into that community that I stayed in other than coming and paying that person at their house, I know that those are going to tear away at the neighborhoods that we have in Manhattan Beach right now. In order to enforce it, I think it's a terrible idea that we have our neighbors tattling on other neighbors. There's no way to get an even playing field there. Someone asked me that question, and it took me 10 minutes to book an Airbnb on my phone. It's not rocket science. You book it, penalize the people for more than they would have made, and that way you dissuade them from doing it anyway despite the penalties. It's not hard.
Mr. Ngoko?
In five years of going to city council meetings, I've learned one thing. Our city likes to ban things. Unfortunately, we're not very good at enforcing those bans. So I'd like to ask for a ban. I would like a ban on unenforced bans. Or at least a moratorium until we can enforce the ones that we have. You know, I put forth this idea that we need to coordinate code enforcement, law enforcement, and community policing in order to really work out how to effectively police short-term rental bans. And if we can do that, figure out how to make it all work together, then perhaps we'll stand a chance at actually enforcing some of the other bans, like public smoking, polystyrene, single-use plastics, those sorts of things. I'm, you know, for the past five years, I've been a block captain and an active Neighborhood Watch area coordinator for El Porto. I've met many of our residents in Neighborhood Watch who are more than willing to keep an eye out for this sort of thing.
I was on the city council that banned short-term rentals. They don't belong in residential neighborhoods. It's commercial activity. It's a hotel. It belongs in a commercial zone, and that's why we banned it. There were so many complaints about all of the problems with noise, parking, trash. We banned it. However, at that time, there wasn't the software that is now available. We had a problem with VRBO, Airbnb, HomeAway, Flip a Key. They were violating the law. And you could see the listings on the internet. Now there's software that trolls the internet and sends automatic letters and fines. The fines should be escalating. It shouldn't be a cost of doing business. It should be a real penalty. We want to make, we want to keep our city the nice, family-oriented, small-town community. No commercial activity next to residential properties.
Thank you, Ms. Hadley?
I'm a no on short-term rentals for now, unless and until we can enforce the ban. I'm the mother of four, and I know how easy it is to say, "Don't do this, don't do that, turn off the TV, stop playing Fortnite, blah, blah, blah." It's just words unless you follow through. So I do agree, we have an easy time in the city banning things. We have a very difficult time enforcing them. I am tough enough. I have the leadership skills. I have the persuasive abilities. I will work with the city to enforce whatever we ban. Let's get a handle on it. I absolutely think a ban right now is a good thing. I said I didn't want a permanent, absolute, forever ban earlier. I would like to get to yes for two weeks or four weeks a year. I think there are plenty of residents who would like to leave and house swap for two weeks or four weeks out of the year. But we aren't enforcing it. It is a Wild West. It's easy to ban things like the prior council did. They did nothing to enforce it. I will enforce the ban, get it under control, and then we'll see. And let's have a town hall at Miracosta where everyone can speak on the topic. Thank you.
So my position on the short-term rental ban and feeling very strongly that we should enforce the ban, we should put teeth into the enforcement, has been a work in process. And what it has done is it is, it's an example of how I work. So when I first came and heard the residents coming to city council and talking about how negatively they were impacted by these short-term rentals, my first reaction was, "We need a solution." I'm a problem solver, and I wanted to come up with a solution. And I've learned over these last several months that I was naive in thinking that the solution could be strictly restricting the bans and trying to come up with some restrictions on using our homes for short-term rental. And I have come to learn that what we really need to do right now, that it's imperative, after listening to so many people telling us how they are negatively affected, is to enforce the ban, to get in with real teeth and enforce this ban, to have a dedicated code enforcement officer, to look at our online resources, and to really do this as a 24/7, around-the-clock opportunity to enforce this ban. Thank you.
Thank you all. The next question for, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Burton, I forgot we started with Frank.
I'm the father of the ban. So when I was mayor pro temp, my opinion was informed by 35 years of public service to a city. So it was a simple issue for me, okay? It was spreading like wildfire, and staff came with three possible solutions, but they weren't enough because I knew the general plan. Our general plan is our constitution for land use and planning. And it says we are first and foremost a residential community. So I knew the ban was the right thing to do. We must, right now, we're at a tipping point in this community. Are we going to become a tourist town? Are we going to be the residential community that we love and cherish and why it's so special? And make no mistake about it, Airbnb is working hard to get candidates on city council. And so the reason the ban's not being enforced, it was being enforced at first, but then when I left and a new council came in, the majority of council was in favor, so staff stopped enforcing it. That's what happened. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question may seem a little like the last, but not talking about short-term rentals, talking about code enforcement in general, and starting with Mr. Withers. Code enforcement issues matter to every Manhattan Beach resident, from turning in neighbor for short-term rentals, dogs on the beach, picking up after dogs, noisy parties, construction noise, people on the bike path, and bikes on the people path. We would all like everyone in our town to be more kind and civil to each other. Do you have any suggestions for improving code enforcement to make that happen?
You gave me the easy question first. I appreciate that, Michelle. Thank you. You know, code enforcement, the success in code enforcement lies in one area. Enforce them. If we have a law that says people can't camp on the beach, then we ought to enforce our codes that say people can't camp on the beach, regardless of who you are. If we have a ban on smoking, then we ought to be able to enforce that ban on smoking. And if we have a ban on Airbnbs, then we ought to be able to enforce those bans too. It's the same thing that we said, and you're right, it is very similar to the last question. But like we've talked about, we are a very ban-happy city because we are very protective of our way of life, as we should be. It's a wonderful life that we live down here, and there are forces out there that mean to take that away from us. The success to that lies in our code enforcement. It lies in enforcing people stopping at stop signs. It's that simple. That's how we get back to the Manhattan Beach that we all moved into and that we all knew from the past.
I used to have a really glib answer about code enforcement, which was just that we need more of it. Unfortunately, resources are limited. So as part of the fiscal responsibility, I think we need to look at the ways to grow that. I had a really good conversation with Stephanie Cazaleas of the Public Works Department about code enforcement and how creatively we can seek funding sources to enforce certain parts of the code that then frees up time for other people, for, sorry, for inspectors to work on other projects. Unfortunately, some of those funding sources require that those inspectors only work on those particular things. So I do have faith that our city is being creative in trying to find ways to enforce the many, many codes that we have, but we need to keep being creative and commit more resources to finding these funding sources and applying them as soon as we can.
Powell?
Laws are useless unless they're enforced. And when word gets out that they're not being enforced, people don't obey them. When I was on the city council, there was a theory by the city staff that code enforcement was on a complaint-only basis. And I said, "No. If a code enforcement officer, or residential construction officer, or a police officer sees a violation, they should cite the offending party." And when I was at a council meeting, I brought that up, and this then-city manager kind of chuckled, and he said no one had actually filed a complaint. I got out a sheet of paper, and I wrote, "I complain." And I handed it to the city clerk, and it was enforced. It was a parking situation. But I'm always of the opinion that you need common sense, enforceable laws. Don't pass a law if it cannot be enforced, and the laws that we have must absolutely be enforced.
Ms. Hadley?
I'm fairly straightforward and simple on some of this stuff. I'm fairly straightforward and simple on some of this stuff. What I want to do on city council is provide basic, unsexy municipal services at the best possible price. And that's trash, and that's water, and that's sewage. I'm one of the only candidates who will, I'm pledging to keep our police and fire in-house within Manhattan Beach and not contract out to the county, for instance. So code enforcement, to me, is a basic service that our residents require, and that's part of why we live in civilizations. If we want to live in the middle of nowhere and make our own rules and not, not contract and work with other people, we can do that. But when you live in a civilization and you're codependent with people, we do need to have laws and regulations, and they do need to be enforced. So I consider that one of my highest and most important jobs on council. I'm not going to swing for the fences. I'm, I'm not a homerun hitter. I'm a base-hit kind of gal. I'm going to get walked, I'm going to hit, get hit by pitches, and I'm going to steal bases. But let's do the basics right, and everything else will fall into place.
Thank you, Ms. Stern.
So I've sat and listened to so many people who expressed their frustration at bringing forth a complaint about some code that is, that is not being followed, and then there's no follow-through. And, and I understand that frustration. If we are going to have a complaint-driven code enforcement process, then we need to have clear indications, a 24/7 hotline, and communicating to our residents exactly how to make those complaints. And then we need to be responsive, and then turn around and, and be responsive back to those complaints. In addition to our complaint-driven enforcement, we also need to be proactive and really look at where are our complaints coming from, and have code enforcement officers who are thinking ahead and they're thinking about where they can see the potential, where those stop signs are being run through right in front of MBMS school during school hours. You know, where are the, where are the leaf blowers even constantly being used and not enforced? So let's get the complaint-driven part going more productively, and let's be proactive.
Mr. Burton?
Yes, having served on city council for one term, I know the city employees, I know them well. So our code enforcement officers are really good at what they do. If you've ever talked to a couple, they're really good. But the council needs to provide the strong leadership, because the code enforcement officer won't enforce if they know the council isn't behind it, behind them, and backing them. So recently, I'll give you an example. A code enforcement officer, there were some complaints regarding campaign signs, and, and the code enforcement officer was told, "Take, take the signs out when they're not placed appropriately, if they're placed illegally." So that code enforcement did. And then, then there was another, basically direction the next day, "Well, no, don't do that anymore." The next day, it switched back, it switched back. You just have to enforce the laws. And that's what happened with the ban. If we had just enforced it. Mayor DePaulitano, at the last meeting this was discussed, he asked, he asked him, "How many, how many fines have you actually issued?" There's been none. We're not doing any enforcement. You need strong leadership at council to protect the code enforcement officers.
Mr. Franklin?
We have a, we have a saint within our midst, maybe not in this room, but her name is Jackie Harris. And Jackie Harris takes a lot of these complaints, and then does her best to help mediate them. She's at a desk in City Hall. We need to get the code enforcement officers, the two that I proposed, they need to be out and about. They have to stagger their hours. You have a problem with constructions starting early, or working on days that they're not supposed to. Have these people show up early and go ahead and give citations. We also have to look at the, who's the responsible party? So for example, we spent a lot of council time on banning smoking in multifamily buildings, apartment buildings. Who has, who has, who has the most vested interest in that? It's the landlord. They, they have in their leases stipulations that the tenant cannot smoke. Who's at that building all the time? The landlord. It's up to the landlord to enforce that. We need common sense laws so that we can go ahead and enforce them and not spend council's time making unenforceable ordinances.
Thank you all. Now we're going to move to one-minute answers to individual questions for each of you. Try to be fair to everyone, starting with Mr. Ngoko. In your candidate statement, you promised to put residents' needs above those of special interests. Could you describe those special interests and how they've impacted our town?
In the five years that I've been here, I've noticed that, you know, there's a lot of overshadowing from previous councils, from previous commissioners. I'm the new guy, as I mentioned. I've only been here five years. Five years means that I don't, I haven't had time to develop cronies. I've developed a few enemies, apparently, if you gauge by the condition of my yard signs in some places. But other than that, I'm not afraid to speak on behalf of the residents. I'm, you know, as much as I've been involved with organizations like the Conservancy and the Residents Association, if you talk to the people who've served on those boards with me, I was not in anybody's pocket. If anything, I was the new guy that was challenging, you know, the status quo as to why things were done the way they were. I'll continue to do that if I'm put on council, and remain impervious to the influence of previous, previous people who have served our community in elected positions.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. You are running on your record. What plans and innovative ideas do you have for the future, or are you happy with a status quo? Please don't tell us about any of your past accomplishments, just ideas for the future.
I'm never happy with status quo. I look forward and I'm always proactive. Things that I want to see done, of course, is I don't want the ban on short-term rentals removed. I want to see real pension reform, which we started when I was on the city council. And I see former Mayor Hoerth, and we served together. We looked at things that are problems waiting to happen, and we addressed them. There's a number of other things. We are fiscally responsible, we have a great community, but some people think that we're coming up on the next recession, the cyclical recession. We want to be prepared to weather that. We want to look at public safety. I want to hire extra police officers. I want footbeat patrols. I want the bicycle patrols. I want to see patrols during the evening in areas like the Strand, Metlocks, and other areas that, and the tree section. Thank you.
Ms. Hadley? On your website, you say, "I will not favor any political party," but you have a strong history with the partisan party, especially when our next, next election after this one will be aligned with a national presidential election. Do you have any ideas about how to support nonpartisanship in local elections and governance?
This is a nonpartisan election. I am running as a nonpartisan, bipartisan candidate. I have no, I am taking zero endorsements from any group whatsoever. All my endorsements are MB voters or MB business owners, full stop. I somewhat resent the implication that, that my nonpartisan candidacy is connected to any political organization. I, I, I submit that the question is somewhat unfair. This is a nonpartisan race. I am 100% focused on Manhattan Beach. Voters in the room, all of you, that is my, that sole focus. I am not endorsed by any group outside of Manhattan Beach. One of the only candidates who has accepted zero group endorsements. I have no political aspirations. I am not looking to cozy up to Sacramento, not even the South Bay Council of Governments. I'm going to be a junkyard dog right here for Manhattan Beach, just like I did raising my kids for 23 years, and an MBA running my own business.
Thank you. Ms. Stern? Almost everyone in Manhattan Beach wants to preserve our environment. You are running as the environmental candidate. What are you specifically proposing that sets you apart, and what sacrifices would you ask residents to make for our environment?
Thank you. So I am the only candidate that really speaks to environmental issues. I feel very strongly that we need to take seriously the, the warnings that we have about our global warming and how that can affect us today, and really how that can affect our children. And we need to take steps today for that. I believe that we need to really address water conservation. We need to be looking at how we're using water better in our homes and in our businesses. I believe that we need to, to look at implementing a single-use plastics ban. And I, and I know that that might be something that, that seems inconvenient, something that we might have to get used to, but I really believe that that's important for continuing on this, on this path that we've taken in Manhattan Beach to be the forefront of environmental issues. I think we should be looking at incentivizing building practices, using green products in our building practices. And I think we need to look at reducing our carbon emissions every way that we can. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burton? You have talked in the past about building a large hotel facility behind our mall. You proposed that our town become the hub of a Silicon Valley, a Silicon Beach boom. Do you still support those ideas? Why or why not?
No, at that hotel location, evidently, that land was deeded as parkland, and also there might be pollution at that location. So I don't think that. But I do think economic development is important. I do think we have opportunities, and the Rosecrans Corridor for, for attracting some businesses, I think that's important. I do think on Sepulveda, there might be some opportunities. But economic development is something we have to do, and I'm not quite sure how we're doing it now, too.
Thank you. Mr. Franklin? You had the first full-page ad in The Beach Reporter, and in that ad, you criticized one of your fellow candidates. How would you describe the tone of your campaign?
Well, we have one candidate here, Wayne Powell, who said that, in, in the previous election, that the electorate, that the residents need to see the truth, need to learn the truth. And that was speaking the truth. So I don't know where that's perceived as negative. Those are the facts, okay, about what they did. So I, I run a very positive campaign because I want to make sure that we do really good things for Manhattan Beach, that we're open, that we're honest, that we're straightforward with our residents, and that we work hard to preserve the quality of life that we all came here for. So I would say I have a very upbeat and a very positive campaign, and we need to also find the, find the facts. We need, we need to talk about the facts and the truth, and what someone has done, hopefully, maybe they've learned from their mistakes. I don't know. But can we really, can we really take that chance with our next, with our next council?
Thank you. Mr. Withers, you ask voters the question, "Do you think things are better now than they were two years ago?" How would you answer that question and why?
I would agree with most of the people that have asked that question too, and, and say they've either stayed the same or perhaps even gotten a little bit worse around here. That's why I'm standing up here, not because I have free time or because I've got nothing better to do, but because I deeply care about this city. And every day that I get up and watch the city slip a little bit further and further away from the Manhattan Beach that I know, I had to get up and do something about it rather than just sit there and complain, or write letters, or hem and ha to my patients who come through the door. I think that, yeah, things are starting to slip in the direction towards a Manhattan Beach that we're no longer going to recognize. We want to double the height of buildings on Sepulveda. We want to stop enforcing our laws about people camping on our beaches. We're losing our identity, and we're losing it fast. There are those who would say that it's already gone. I argue that it's not. That's why I'm standing here before you and fighting to keep it and get back whatever we can.
Thank you. Okay, back to questions for all, and starting with Mr. Powell. What local issue mattered so much to you that you gave up your Tuesday night to come and speak to city council in the past?
Well, there were a number of issues. One was Sand Dune Park. We had all kinds of problems with Sand Dune Park. I suggested we have a town hall workshop. We can't accomplish something at a regular council meeting. So we did. We had two workshops. And the same thing with a downtown-specific plan. I've always been a supporter of public input. The more input we get from residents, the better decisions we make. Sometimes decisions are so complex, you shouldn't have it at a regular council meeting. You have it at a publicly noticed, agendized, public workshop, and you have it on an informal basis where everyone can speak and present their sides. We've had other issues. Of course, Gelson's was one of them. I mean, other projects. We had the redevelopment of the mall. Getting public input, that's how you learn about unintended consequences of potential actions, and you get great solutions. And that is most important to me.
Thank you, Ms. Hadley.
The last time I came to city council with a particularly personal issue was barking dogs. And that's really where my heart for the people who are affected by short-term rental right, right next door to them and the bachelor parties and things, I feel for them because in, in two instances here in Manhattan Beach, I've been a stay-at-home mom with little kids with a traveling husband, and had really some difficult times with neighbors with barking dogs. And again, the code process was not followed, it was too difficult for me to make complaints, it was too difficult to get to mediation. We did end up coming to terms with our neighbors, and of course, I reached out to them. But the city could have been much more proactive and helped me maintain my quality of life. So I will be mindful of that with the people who struggle with the short-term rentals, and that's why I am a no, and I want to enforce the ban for now until we can see if we can do that completely effectively. And then most recently, the trash hauler contract. I love those basic city services, you know, trash water sewers, and I love our waste management guys, and I was happy to go down to City Hall and support them, and glad we decided to stay with waste management.
Thank you, Ms. Stern.
So the first time that I came to City Hall to express my concern was because I cared so much about my neighborhood, and it was about preserving my neighborhood. And when I was early, an early resident of Manhattan Beach, there was a threat to a barrier that was stopping traffic from coming onto Sepulveda into our neighborhoods. That, that barrier was threatened to be open, and there were all, there were a lot of discussions about how to bring, bring more traffic into our neighborhood. And I, as, as a neighbor in our, and a, and a neighbor that was very well-connected to our neighborhood, my neighbors asked me, they, they termed me the mayor of our neighborhood, so I didn't have to run for anything at that time. I was just elected without even having to run. Asked me to go to City Hall and to represent our neighborhood in, in making sure that we were not going to be negatively impacted by traffic concerns. And we were, we were very well-satisfied, and I learned that City Hall really can respond to neighborhood concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Burton? I'm not sure, I, I mean, not as a, as I think Houseman or Mayor, but when you went to city council as a civilian.
I understood the question. You know, when, when I was on city council, I would go out and listen to the residents. So any issue on city council, I knew how you felt. Looking in the room tonight, looking at your faces and your eyes, I know how much you love this community. So on any issue, it's pretty simple for a city council to go out and talk to everybody. So, so recently, when I saw, I think, I think it's the biggest issue of our generation, the short-term rentals. It threatens the very existence of who we are. We're primarily, first and foremost, a residential community. So I went down when city council was discussing it, and it was a 4-1 vote. Mayor Stephen DePaulitano said, "No, a ban works, and we need to enforce it." And, and I gave public comment. And I told the city council what I told you. I said, "This, our general plan says we're first and foremost. It says protect our residential neighborhoods." They're almost sacred. And the code says, "Don't have anything that negatively impacts your neighborhood." Stop it. You're not allowed to have that behavior. So I told them that. I also told, "It was our economic engine. It's our property values. They keep on going up. They bring in the taxes." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Franklin?
We marched down Marine Avenue because we were upset about the traffic. On our block, on Pine Avenue, I live at 2001 Pine Avenue, between Marine and 19th Street. And we counted 40 children under the age of 10 on the block at that time. And we call ourselves Little Sepulveda. There's a lot of bypass traffic, very few stop signs between Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Marine. On Marine, west of Sepulveda, there was only one stop sign before you got to the Valley Ardmore five-way stop sign. People were racing through the neighborhood. So we organized ourselves. We had our kids, our five- and six- and seven-year-old kids, write posters, you know, draw posters. My wife is in communications, and so she got the news van down there, and we marched down Marine Avenue. But ended up going to city council, and I pounded on the podium. I said, "What are you going to do?" And Joyce Fahey turned it around on me and said, "Well, Mr. Franklin, the police can't be everywhere. What are you going to do?" As a result, we formed and co-created the Do Stop, Don't Speed, and made a really good impact on speeding and stopping at stop signs. So that's how it's done. We all get involved, we all find a solution together.
Thank you, Mr. Withers.
I went to city council, correct?
Or, it's very important.
Well, my first time I ever went to city council, and I see who I went with right back there. Vinnie, how you doing, buddy? Probably isn't going to make me the most popular person in the room, but it was back when, when the Charlie Saclay Six-Man Tournament got way out of hand, and we were trying to figure out, "What are we going to do with this tournament?" And those of us who supported the tournament, those of us who know what that tournament means to our town, I, my dad had told me just a couple weeks ago, "If you do get elected, please don't let the people forget who Charlie Saclay was and what a great guy that he was." And, you know, to go down and speak to the city council and to have them come to a resolution where they moved that tournament, they got it back under control, and now it's slowly[1783.62] drifting back into the weekend where the people who were meant to enjoy it can enjoy it again, and we don't have the problems that we were having before, I think we actually saw ourselves come to a reasonable resolution to that, and we were able to hold on to a little bit of our history and not put the name Skechers on something that we enjoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mungoko.
Five years ago, I think the first time I actually came to Council to speak on something that I was very passionate about, it was about moving the elections into the even-year cycles and complying with the state regulations. I still feel very strongly that putting it in the November cycle will have a negative effect on down-ticket races. Shortly after that, I actually got involved with the Friends of Polywog Park, even though I don't live anywhere near there. It made me sort of NIMBY-proof. Nobody could call me a NIMBY because I actually lived in El Porto. But I cared passionately about our green spaces. Sustainability is one of the four pillars of my campaign. So I continued to go down to City Hall as we were talking about polystyrene bans, you know, things that were going to affect the small business community. And then most recently, of course, I was at both meetings regarding the short-term rental ban. There you have it.
Thank you. Next question, and starting with the last is now first, Ms. Hadley. A number of candidates have expressed support for extended use of license plate readers, I believe you have. Do you have any privacy concerns about the use of this technology or even more advanced tools such as drones, facial recognition software, tapping into data available outside and inside our homes from smart TVs and private security systems? Where do you draw the line, and what protections would you suggest?
Yeah, great question. I am a law and order gal. I want to keep our police and fire in-house. I believe strongly that the best reason to be in a community is safety and courts and trash water and sewers. Those are my favorites. So yes, I am advocating for extra automated license plate readers. Chief Abel would really like those. They're very effective. They don't take breaks. They don't file for disability. They don't take pensions or require health care benefits. They work 24 hours a day. And as I understand it, the ALPRs ping only when a plate that's already in the system and has been flagged with some negative activity, the car is stolen, or it's traced to somebody in the system that's been fingerprinted or convicted in the past. That's the only time the police department, there just isn't enough data or storage to store every plate and match it up with all these people. I mean, that would just take way too much computing power. So yes, I am concerned about some of those other new technologies. I don't want to lead on some of those. I don't want to experiment. Let's stick with what works. I'd like to buy two more ALPRs and improve public safety here in Manhattan Beach.
Ms. Turn.
So the readers that we have right now, we know that they are effective. We know that our police department uses them in effective ways to understand who's coming into our city that, for their own patrolling. We have also looked at other areas in bringing in those readers and knowing that there are areas that have been investigated that are not appropriate or that we can't put them on other roadways in Manhattan Beach. We do need to be concerned about whether we are overreaching and whether we are affecting privacy rights that are, first of all, not necessary and that do overreach and do limit our privacy and do threaten our privacy. So we support our police force in how they need to effectively keep our community safe, but we also have to protect our residents and their privacy issues, interests. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burton.
Yes, public safety is my campaign's first priority because keeping us safe is our job one. I was former general counsel of several police departments, LAPD, the airport police. I was a former prosecutor. So I brought that wealth of knowledge to City Council in my first term. I'm the one that came up with the idea, the automated license plate reader program, not the department. And I thought it'd be a great tool. And if you ask the department right now, they said it's their best tool for fighting crime. It's a crime deterrent, and they can apprehend people. So we should be expanding that program, and we should also expand our security camera registration program. So I will come up with more fresh, innovative ideas when it comes to public safety because I've got that experience and background. On my platform, too, I'm also advocating that the TOT hotel tax, not just going to the general fund, that we earmark it for five new police officers, create a special problems unit so they're out in the neighborhoods at night. The chief supports that. That money shouldn't go into the general fund, the salaries and pensions. It should go to benefit you and keep you safe.
Thank you. Mr. Franklin?
So I'm kind of old-fashioned about, you know, 28 years ago, or 34 years ago when I came here, 28 years ago when we bought a house and moved to the tree section, the police did a pretty effective job. There's five open recs right now for police officers in Manhattan Beach. Okay, I talked to the chief. The problem is recruiting. It's finding the right kind of people that want to come here and be a police officer. I think if we go ahead and fill those positions, that should be a priority. We can help. We can help if housing is an issue. We can open up our homes to these recruits so that they can go ahead and live here in Manhattan Beach. I'm a military family. My son's in the Marine Corps. He's a non-commissioned officer down in Miramar. His buddies love coming to Manhattan Beach. When they leave the service, those are quality people. We should go ahead and try to recruit them to come here and work in Manhattan Beach and help protect us. And after those five, maybe even five more, get those boots on the ground, and let's get them out there and be a visible presence. The license plate readers are good. I think police officers are better.
Thank you, Mr. Withers.
The license plate readers work. Obviously, we should have more of them. I think Manhattan Beach needs to become a city again where it is extremely uncomfortable to break the law. One thing that might surprise you, I mean, would you guys assume that courtyard out there that that's under some sort of closed-capion television? It's not. It's absolutely not. There's not a single camera going out there. In fact, the minute you get on camera is when you walk into the police station, at which point I would assume you're probably not committing a crime. So I love the idea that we're asking our private citizens to register their cameras. I think the city should meet them in that task and put cameras up in our municipal areas so that we can have some sort of idea of what's going on here, instead of having people on next door arguing over whether people are camping here at night. It'd be really easy to answer that question if we just had a video camera out there. I think there are other areas of the city that could also use some surveillance that doesn't violate privacy but keeps us safe and manages our risk against lawsuits and our many activities that we have in our city.
Thank you, Mr. Mungoko.
I suppose that in my 15 years of living in New York, I became somewhat immune to the idea of being on camera every three seconds. But as someone who lived in New York before, during, and after September 11th, I'm also not immune to the idea of being shaken out of your sense of security and safety. So while I do agree that we need to increase surveillance, we need to add to that in order to increase public safety in Manhattan Beach, I think that that needs to be navigated gently. You know, even our historical association recently relaunched their logo with a Greek ship, Progressus. So progress should be something that we embrace, that we manage over time, and that we introduce gently. You know, I think particularly with the idea of being under surveillance more often, that's going to be something that's going to require a lot of community education so that they understand the benefits of it.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
I was on the City Council that implemented the automated license plate readers, and we put them at every major entry point and exit point. They've been proven to be a crime-fighting tool, crime prevention, crime apprehension. In other cities, you know, they would get a ping, and they would catch someone that was going to commit a burglary. They had a past record, or they had a want or a warrant out for them. Also, there were crimes that were committed where somebody only got a partial license plate, but they went back and checked the database, and they had the full license plate. They arrested the suspects, and a crime, property crime, you know, the property was returned. This is actually a secured building, being police and fire, and there are actually cameras that you may not be aware of. But, you know, I don't want to have Big Brother looking at us. Whenever we wanted to have more security cameras, our residents said, "We want to have some semblance of privacy." But where they are desperately needed, we have them, and they've done great crime prevention.
Thank you. Thank you all. I have 10 more questions, but I think we'll go to the end and give you each two minutes to explain something you haven't had time to explain, or tell us why you think you deserve the vote of the people of Manhattan Beach.
So thank you again for all being here, and thank you both and the Residents Association for giving us the opportunity to explain a lot more about how we feel about this city. You've seen very different styles in all seven of us, and I know that I present in a very quiet style. And that's not untrue. I am quiet, but I'm also very thoughtful. I'm very deliberative. So I've really enjoyed in these last few months getting a chance to learn and listen, and that's what I do, and that's how I'll serve this city. I will listen to the needs of our residents. I will listen to the needs of all of our residents. It's not a gimmick for me. It's not a campaign strategy to say, "I bring community together." It's how I have served our community for all the years that I've been here. It's how I approach all of my outreach involvement. It's how I've always approached my jobs. I am, I work for a small business right now. I am the program director at Creating Conversations. We bring books and authors to communities all throughout this area in Orange County. And we reach out to communities, and that's the way I will serve Manhattan Beach. We've had some questions, the lightning round questions with those quick answers. There's so much more that we would like to say, that I would like to say about how I would approach some of those. I would love to be able to talk to you and to reach out to you. I want you to come find me on my website. The first question that was asked is how we want to be responsive. I want to be a partner to you in getting what you feel is important in front of any of our city services in front. I want to be the partner for you for our police department and for our schools, which is so important to me, and for our business districts. And I really hope that because I can be your partner, that you will vote for me on March 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burton.
I've been a public servant for 35 years, and experience really does matter. Public services, my passion is what I loved, and the best job I ever had was serving on City Council, serving you. And that's why I'm running for my second term, because I understand my job is working for you. So if I was to ask you, experience makes a big difference. So all the candidates here love the community. They think it's a special community. But if I was to ask you, let's say we're all flying on a flight, or we're going to go on a flight to New York, and we know there's several severe storms, and there's been bird strikes. And before we get on, the airline comes out, and guess what? You can elect now your pilot. One is Bill Gates. He says, "You know what? I'm really smart. I've flown over 1,000, I mean, a million miles, and, you know, I want to be your pilot today. Elect me as the pilot." The other one is LeBron James. You know, "I'm the best of all time." And also, "I've flown hundreds of thousands of miles, and by the way, I've been taking lessons of flying a Cessna." The next person has been 35 years as a pilot. He has flown through all the storms and successfully landed. He's even landed on water. His name is Sully. Well, we'd all choose Sully. I'm the Sully candidate. That experience really, really does matter. So we've got big issues on public safety. I've got that background. We have big issues on the budget. Last budget on Council, I didn't approve. I made the following motion, and it didn't go. We need to be a savings culture. So I said, "You know, every time a budget comes, $80 million of revenue, staff recommends 79.5 spending. 90 million, it's 89.5." So I made a motion, "Take 6% of our revenue, put it in a savings account, and let's have a real, real capital improvement project." When I started Council, we were 268 employees. We're now 307. And my motion, I said, "Let's walk that back by attrition over 24 months, and let's go back to 285." Now is not the time for a fresh-faced office. You need the experienced person on Council. Vote for Mark Burton. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Franklin?
I thought you were going to tell the joke, "There's a priest, a rabbi, and the Pope on a plane." Okay? So I've lived here 34 years, and I raised a family here. That means something. It means I went, my kids went to Pacific School. They went on to the middle school. They went on to Miracosta High School. I taught and coached all the youth sports. I've been on every single field here. I know, before they were turfed, I mean, there were rocks coming up and things like that. This history is very, very important. I've always worked for safety for our children. Now I'm working for fiscal responsibility. We've wasted so much money with the previous councils, okay? We want a scout house. It's very, very important. The intergenerational mixing of the scouts, you know, the children with our older adults, I mean, that's a terrific thing. There would have been plenty of money to finance a scout house if we hadn't wasted it on the downtown-specific plan, on hiring four executive-level people that weren't needed, on creating the newly-created assistant city manager position, and then also going through the expense of terminating a city manager where due diligence was not exercised. That's the primary responsibility of City Council, is to hire and to vet city managers. I mean, 15 minutes of searching could see that there was a potential problem there, okay, in terms of bringing people along. You know, this article in the Easy Reader, November 1st, it says it all. Team Denay, they worked together in concert to come and feed at the public trough. You, you know, I'm the only candidate for City Council that is carrying with me all the time my property tax statement, okay? This is money that we pay for government that we deserve. We deserve better government. I can bring that. I'm the only one that's been continuously working for 35 years in relevant businesses that can go ahead and, you know, secure the future for Manhattan Beach.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Mr. Withers?
Mark, if you would have given us the choice of Kobe, I might have had him land that plane. Guys, I guess if there's one thing I really want you to take home about me tonight and know about me, it's that I have asked no person for money. I have accepted no money from anybody. I am beholden to nobody or no institution other than Manhattan Beach. I got to give my firemen in the back a shout-out. Guys, if you don't know how hard these guys work, just wait until you have a fire down on the Walk Street, and you're going to be very, very glad that we have our own standing fire department who knows how to navigate our streets. But, sorry, I got a little distracted there. But I want you guys to know that there is no pocket for me to be in because there is no pocket that I have taken out of. This is a self-funded campaign, and I'm hoping that, and in fact, I know that, the Manhattan Beach voters, based on how many people there are here tonight, I can tell that the Manhattan Beach voters are more thoughtful than to just vote for the person who has the most lawn signs or to vote for the person who was able to afford the most mailers. Believe me, when we all signed up and got certified, we all got those phone calls with people asking us to write us a check, and they'll tell us, they'll hand us the election. It's not hard. I'm not here to buy your vote. I'm here to earn it.
Thank you. Ms. Mungoko?
Well, everyone, the four pillars of my campaign, finally, are fiscal responsibility, public safety, sustainability, and technology. I think that we need to institute a culture of savings in our City Council. For public safety, I think that we need to increase pedestrian and bike safety so that we can all enjoy the healthy outdoor lifestyle that many of us chose to move here for. In terms of sustainability, I think we are poised to be one of the leading cities in terms of implementing sustainability. I'd like to maintain that as we go forward. In terms of technology, as I said, I think technology is the foundation of communication, and communication is the way that we engage our community. So you've heard the first 10 words. You've heard the what? What do we care about? If you want to hear why, how, and, you know, beyond that, you can reach out to me, you can call me, you can text me, you can Facebook me, you can tweet, you can also Instagram. But more importantly, today, I've actually launched a short campaign video. So if you liked my message, I hope you'll look for Mungoko for Council on YouTube and share that video with your friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
So I've been going door-to-door, talking with our residents for the last six and a half weeks. I've lost 11 pounds and a lot of shoe leather, and it's the same thing I did two prior occasions. And it's great because I have the pulse of the community, what they want and what they don't want. More importantly, as I go door-to-door, they go, "Councilmember Powell, you helped us out on such and such of an issue." Or, "Mayor Powell, you were responsive. You were the only one who responded, and you got the job done." Or, "We liked your initiatives to improve public participation at council meetings." To me, that is the best redemption, and it's also about experience. As I said earlier, I've been a public accountant and a chief financial officer for over 30 years. And yes, I'm 66 and I've been a strong supporter of our older adult community. I serve as an elected member of the senior, the city's senior citizen advisory committee. I believe in serving our community. Now, I take exception to one candidate who said that we spent $10.5 million on consultants. We absolutely did not and I have the city information to prove that we did not. It was based on some false quotes in a newspaper. Also, there were not four new employees. One position was never hired. One, two were not new positions as alleged. There's been a number of misinformation. There's a reason why our city has a AAA bond rating, the highest bond and credit rating, the best that any city can have. We've had an independent audit. None of that would be true or, you know, it would have been disposed of in an audit. So I am standing on my record of fiscal responsibility, having balanced budgets for each of the years, having a surplus actually, and never raising taxes, not once. So I would love to earn your vote on March 5th and you can go to my website at Wayne Powell, the number four, MB.com to see a listing of my accomplishments and more importantly, what I would do if I'm elected. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Hadley?
Thank you, Manhattan Beach residents, for hosting this debate and thank all of you for coming out in the middle of the cold, dark evening, in the middle of winter. I'm new. I'm running because I'm new and I really would urge you to vote for one of us five newbies. You're gonna want to vote for me. I am the strong horse. I think I'm gonna win and you're gonna want to say that you voted for me. So Hadley, on March 5th, we don't want experience if it's bad experience. And to be honest, I think the prior council made some bad decisions. They did spend too much money. We would have more money for police officers, we'd have more money for license plate readers, we'd have more money to keep the strand cleaner and to get the sand off the bike path and all these things if we hadn't wasted so much money in the prior council. So we need new, we need change, we need term limits. I will be proposing term limits. Two terms and then you're done. Then you turn it over to the next generation. I think that's important. Several of us, Joe, Hildy, and I have raised children here in the community. I've been married 26 years to my wonderful husband, David, back there. I love him very much. I have four children. I'm the only candidate up here with a minor child at home. She's 17 years old and a senior at Miracosta. I have two daughters in college at the University of Michigan in nursing and the College of William &amp; Mary in Virginia. My oldest son is a 2017 West Point graduate and he's the second lieutenant in the Army. He currently lives in Turkey. He speaks Turkish and Arabic and wants to serve his country in the Middle East in the infantry. So I'm proud of my kids. I'm connected to these school families. I'm endorsed by one, I'm the only candidate endorsed by 100% of the current school board. I'm the only candidate endorsed by Hillary Mahan of the Ed Foundation and the legendary Farnaz Galshani of the Ed Foundation. I'm endorsed by 11 mayors and city council members. I'm endorsed by 35 of the small business owners here. I am the candidate for new, forward, families change.